Not quite live yet.
Oh, I have to wait one second.
We're not quite live.
Now we're live, so now we can officially start the meeting. And we're going to start with a moment of reflection. Thank you. So you can make a disclosure of particular interest now or at any point in time through the meeting should one come up. And next we have confirmation of the agenda. And before I ask for a motion, we have two slight additions on eleven point one, which is other business. We're going to get a verbal report on modernization funding. And in thirteen point one, which is the closed session that we're having, we're going to have a verbal report on matter pertaining to legal advice or potential litigation with regards to public works. So with those two additions, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Move by Council Wilhelm, second by Council Wright. Those in favor, carried unanimously, perfect. Okay, moving on, we have a consent agenda. And we have items five point one to five point one nine, and it also includes the minutes of our last council meeting. Does anyone want to see anything pulled for discussion? Not seen any hands, last chance. I have a motion that council receives the consent agenda items five point one to five point one nine and approves the September second, two thousand and twenty-one council minutes. Moved by Council McDermott, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? It's carried, perfect. Move on, so we have public meetings, hearings and delegations, and first of all, we're going to start with a public meeting. And this is an application for a county of Perth official plan amendment, OPA two hundred by Lucas Lawrence and Robin Lovell. And we'll have Sally doing that.
Switching the motion.
Oh, yeah, first off, I have to motion to recess for the purpose of holding this public meeting. Moved by Counsel Mackenzie, second by Counsel Duncan. Those in favor? It's carried, okay, so. Then I have another motion that the October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, OPA two hundred public meeting agenda be approved. I need a motion for that one, Council McDermott, Counsel Wilhelm, those in favor? That's carried. And we can keep going here. So now I'm going to get a report from, and I believe it's Sally's doing this, right, or is it Sean? So if we get Sean up on the screen here.
There he is, morning Sean.
Hello, good morning, how are you guys? How's everyone?
So we're all ready to listen to your report.
Okay, great, well, thank you. So, good morning, Warden Heson, members of Perth County Council. The property owner is requesting an amendment to the County of Perth official plan to permit the establishment of a second dwelling unit within an existing accessory building that is currently being used as a detached garage, and that is less than five years old. I do have, I guess, just a, an image here, I'm not sure if I'm able to share my screen, just so you guys can get a sense of where we're talking about here. If, it's not a huge deal, but. So anyways, the subject property is located in North Perth at one sixty-eight Fisher Avenue, which is in Atwood. The property is located at the north end of a court or cul-de-sac and contains the existing single detached dwelling as well as the accessory building. The County of Perth official plan does permit second dwelling units, which are self-contained residential units, usually with a private kitchen and bathroom facilities as well as a sleeping area. However, section six, three A of the County of Perth official plan states that a second dwelling unit may be permitted within any structure accessory to a dwelling, provided that it is more than five years in age. So the accessory building on this property was completed in December of twenty nineteen, and the building permit was first issued in December of twenty sixteen. The accessory building has a total floor area of approximately one hundred and sixty-seven square meters or eighteen hundred square feet, with the residential use proposed to encompass one hundred and eleven square meters or twelve hundred square feet of the structure. So I'm just going to share my screen here quickly. I'm kind of new with this, so I'm not totally sure how to get it here, let's see. Sorry, just bear with me, I do apologize. Share screen. Here we go. Sure. Okay, so I, I, I'm able to see that. Yeah, okay, so this is the property up here, as I noted, it's the top of the circle or the cul-de-sac. And this is the existing building. I do have an image here, so. This is the, this is the dwelling with the accessory garage right now. Sorry, so as I noted, that the accessory residential use will only encompass twelve hundred square feet of the structure rather than the full eighteen hundred. In twenty twelve, can you, can you still see the screen, or do I have it blocked now? Okay, good, in twenty twelve, Bill one forty, which was the Strong Communities Through Affordable Housing Act, released by the province of Ontario, authorized the use of second dwelling units within the province. And municipalities were authorized, or excuse me, were required to authorize second dwelling units in their official plans and zoning bylaws. So in twenty fourteen, the County of Perth initiated OPA number one forty-two, which implemented the current second dwelling unit policies that are in the County of Perth official plan, which are identified as section six, three, A. And it included some criteria that accessory structures could be permitted to have a second dwelling unit, provided that it was at least five years. So in reviewing this, and at least five years old, excuse me, in reviewing the staff reports associated with OPA one forty-two, discussion regarding the five-year requirement for accessory structures was really non-existent. At that time, however, requirements that limited development in accessory structures was common because it was perceived that using an existing structure to accommodate a second dwelling unit was less intrusive than permitting a new structure to accommodate the dwelling. Now, more recently, in twenty nineteen, Bill one oh eight, the More Homes, More Choice Act, made amendments to the Planning Act to replace the legislation authorizing second dwelling units with what they now call additional residential units, or ARUs. ARUs not actually now allow up to two on, on one lot where there's a primary residential unit, which is different than previously, it was only the one. And these ARUs are part of the province's response to the housing crisis that we're currently facing. The release of Bill one forty and Bill one oh eight has highlighted the importance of accessory dwellings as a tool to help housing affordability. The updated language includes policies that aim to make the establishment of these ARUs more achievable and with less restrictions. Current policy to limit ARUs and accessory buildings only when an accessory building is at least five years old is an example of a policy that is restrictive and not aligned with provincial interests. In response to the rise of these limiting policies within existing official plans and zoning bylaws in the province, the new policy and, and the new policies and regulations states that where the use of an additional residential unit is authorized, an additional residential use unit is permitted regardless in the date of the construction of the primary residential unit. Now, while the province directed the new regulation of the age of the primary dwelling, it is equally important to remove limitations where the age of the accessory structure is preventing this form of housing in accessory structures as well. The applicant is proposing a second dwelling unit within a two-year-old structure that meets the intent of Bill one forty and Bill one oh eight and the County of Perth official plan to provide opportunities for additional dwelling units in order to provide additional forms of housing and potentially more affordable housing options. As such, it is staff's recommendation that the County of Perth Council approve OPA two hundred to remove the five-year requirement to permit the establishment of a second dwelling unit within the existing accessory building, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. First, I'm going to ask if any of council or have any questions or comments with regards to this application. Not seeing, oh, Counsel.
It's through you, Warden Heson, this could be a question for, for Sean. Are there fees associated with this application?
Yes, thank you. So yes, there was a, an application fee for the applicant to proceed with this application.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so have we received any, oh, Counsel Duncan, sorry.
So I'm going to go a little further on Counsel Kellum's with the fees. There was considerable discussion at our council level during our, our meeting this about whether or not this applicant should have to pay the fee when this situation is only created by the fact that our official plan hasn't been updated yet. So I, I think we need to maybe have some discussion about that after we get through this here, but whether or not our official plan not being updated should, should encompass making this applicant pay the fee to have this.
Okay, we can perhaps have that discussion a bit later, but first we're going to deal with the official plan amendment. So, any other questions with regards to the official plan amendment? Not seeing any now, so have we received any comments from the public regarding OPA two hundred, Sean?
The applicant is, is here, I'm going to call them to panelists just to see if they have.
Okay, didn't see the applicant, so.
Well, I'm, they're in, they're in attending right now, so I'm just going to call them now, okay?
We're going to have the applicant on here. And this would be Luke Lovell, by the looks of it.
Hello.
Good morning, Luke. So we're at the point where we're looking for questions or comments. And if you want to make some comments with regard to this application, it's your chance to do so.
Yeah, so the, the reason that we, just as a backstory, the reason why we want to use this as a this building as an accessory is just for my mother. My father passed away a few years ago, and family's very important to us, so we're we're hoping to just make it as a granny flat for, for my mother so that she can stay close to our family and hopefully, if we twist her arm, maybe we can help, have her help with some childcare with our kids.
I know how that works, that happened in our house one time. We had a trailer moved in, okay. Thank you, Luke, so we've received any comments from the general public, both either supporting or against this? You haven't received anything, Sean, and you haven't received anything, Tanner? Okay, well.
I just had one, one piece of correspondence in support of the application from a neighbor.
Okay.
Mid to North Perth, actually.
Thanks, Sean, so we have one in support, nothing against. Any more comments or questions with regards to this application?
Jim?
Counsel Wright?
You just, you just said a great thing there. A trailer, would, would a person be allowed if we changed this to put a trailer in their backyard and have somebody live in it? Like, forget about building structure, or is that another conversation?
We put a trailer in in nineteen eighty-seven, it was considered a a not a permanent residence, it was a So it was there for my mom and dad to live in, my dad passed away, then my mom lived there after she passed away, and we were able to keep an eye on her, well, then she ended up going into retirement home, so then the trailer left.
Just an interesting thing about a trailer in your backyard that somebody could live in. It's an accessory building, maybe it's not a building in Sally's eyes, so, but we'll have to talk about that later, I don't want to muddy the water.
We have actually had a couple of applications in Perth South, to put trailers on properties, which were approved as secondary residences. It's a handy way to do it, it's not permanent. Go ahead, see other hands up? Sally, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer counsel a bit of clarification, thank you for the opportunity. Just in the use of the word trailer, of when we look at additional residential units, which we want to permit in various forms and different zones and different residential zone, what we're really aiming at is a basically a dwelling unit that meets the building code. And so the trailer is really a pretty, you know, everyone has a different definition for that. So we do have different mobile type dwelling units or modular, some sometimes are referred to as tiny homes, but what we're really aiming for is something that is a dwelling by the building code standards.
And actually, I, I heard when I used the word trailer, it was a mobile home that was fourteen, fourteen or sixteen by sixty-eight. So it wasn't a small little outfit. But they are a far cheaper way to provide housing than to actually build residence, as long as you meet all the separate tank requirements and everything else. Anyway, I have no other comments or questions. So I have a motion here, the Perth County receives report entitled Application for County Official Plan Amendment number two hundred by Lucas Lawrence and Robin Lovell, dated October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, affecting lands described as block fifteen, registered plan six, five, six, five, Elmore Ward, municipality of North Perth, one sixty-eight Fisher Avenue, Atwood, prepared by the planner for information, and the Perth County received comments from the public consideration of the official plan amendment while reserving a decision whether or not to adopt the amendment at the regular meeting of Perth County Council being held October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Excuse me, moved by Counsel Duncan, second by, or Counsel Kellum, sorry, and second by Counselor Duncan. Last chance for comments or questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Okay. Before we adjourn this public meeting, I did err, believe it or not, I do make mistakes like everybody else. I forgot for a mo, to get a motion to approve the minutes from the last official meeting. So if I could have a motion to do that, if everybody's read them. Moved by Counsel McDermott, seconded by Counsel Wilhelm, any comments or questions on those? Those in favor? That's carried, and then one last little item I'm going to deal with before we re, or we can stop this public meeting and go back to regular session, so the comment was made about fees. Fee for this application in particular, can you respond to that, Sally?
Sure.
Maybe we need to report back or something before we can actually make that decision, but you can respond to it and.
Yeah, certainly, staff don't have the authority to refund fees. So if it is the wish of council and a request is being made, then that's something you can consider. And I wouldn't say that it would be unjust, like there is an outdated or an application for something here that we need to get our official plan in line with just permit as a right. And at the same time, there have been other circumstances in the past where people have applied for official plan amendments to do things similarly that we change the policy after the fact. So I think there's, you know, there's some things to weigh there for council. And we will follow your direction on the, on the the reimbursement of fees for the applicant.
Okay, so how does council want to deal with this? Do you want to have something come back with the overall cost of this application? Counsel Duncan, or Counsel Kellum, sorry, Doug.
The worst, the worst. Yes, for your agents, I would like to report back, and would you like to take it one step further with a recommendation from North Perth, municipality of North Perth Council as well?
Okay. So, Counsel Wilhelm?
If we're asking staff to do that, I would also ask that staff, like at previous OPAs, because if we're going to refund one, we should look at them all. And I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so can I just make one additional comment to yours? That would be more an OPA that was in line with what we're dealing with today, not just an OPA in general, because not all are pertaining to this matter.
Yeah.
And I honestly don't recall a whole lot pertaining to this matter, but I could be wrong.
I think I would have to say that any OPA that we've approved that is, would be changed by our new official plan would have to be looked at. Because you're, that's what you're saying, is that you want to look at that the rates or the fees, because if we had our new official plan in place, there would be no fees. Therefore, if you look at the rest of the OPAs that would have been changed by a new official plan, those ones shouldn't have paid fees either. So I think you have to look at the big picture, you can't pick and choose. I think to be fair to the residents, you have to look at it all.
Counsel Nagus, Deputy Warden Nagus, I should say.
Yes, I see their predicament of wanting to fees, but I agree with Bob Wilhelm. Unfortunately, we're dealing with an old official plan, and that's what we have to use. And when you start picking and choosing who's going to get a rebate and who's not going to get a rebate, it doesn't work. So until we get the new official plan put in, people are going to have to pay it. Unfortunately, that's just the way it is.
Counsel McDermott?
I would suggest instead of all OPAs, just we're, we're, we don't we're, we're not with the province, like this was done because we haven't updated our plan, so we're out of sync with the province. And I, I wouldn't be against returning refund if it was shown that it was only if we're out of sync with the province, not that we have a new official plan.
So did you want to make a quick comment or not? Is there a legal counsel on this?
I just caution you that you've got to consider all of the details, for instance, how far back would you go and under what parameters?
Sally?
So there are examples of policy that we have where Perth County has chosen to be more strict, for instance, in our policy than the, than the province. So there are instances where people have made an official plan amendment for something that we ended up changing in the end, but wasn't necessarily against the province, it was just in addition to what the province set up as a structure. So I'm curious if you want to go that far as well, or if you just want to look at, you know, stuff that is not, you know, non-conforming with the province, with the provincial policy. There is a difference.
Yeah, there is a big difference there, actually. Personally, Counsel Wright?
Luke can always wait until the official plan is changed, and then he doesn't have to pay. But if you start muddying the waters like we're talking right now, somebody from twelve years ago could say, hey, you just weren't, didn't have the official plan up to date, when I did, I paid twenty-five hundred dollars. I think you, you can't, it sounds like the government here, we're looking back. Look, look to the future, if Luke wants to do this, Luke, I'm using your name because it's on the screen. Luke wants to do it now, Luke can pay the fee. If Luke wants to wait a year, eighteen months or two years, then, but we might not pass this particular thing the way it suits him. We have to look at it that way, too, we might say, no, if a guy builds a shed, it's already built, we might stick with our five years, we might stick their guns. We don't know.
Counsel Duncan?
In, in that case, county council should be initiating the official plan amendment to, to get in sync with the province immediately.
So I, I agree that there are cases, and this is a perfect example, where it's costing a rate fair money that perhaps it shouldn't have if we were completely up to sync, but I also agree with Counsel Wright. There are some that have gone back a ways that, and Sally alluded to it there, like we are stricter in some areas than other municipalities. And just because somebody had to do an OPA because we had a stricter regulation, like we have a stricter tree bylaw, we have stricter other bylaws than other municipalities, I don't think those are ones that we should be looking at at all. But ones like this exact case, I think is something that would make sense. Sally?
I just wanted to clarify, when I spoke, when I'm talking about something that is stricter, that's quite a legitimate thing to do in your official plan. But there are cases where we had a stricter policy and then we changed it back, and those are the ones I'm referring to.
Okay, so Doug. So would you like to reword your motion?
I'd just like to make a comment, and to speak to Counselor Wright's comments about going back, yes, go back, I'm not sure if any of any of those applications were asked to be refunded, whereas we're dealing with this specific application, which is a recommendation from the municipality of North Perth, so I'm just speaking to this, the rest, I'm not sure about, but.
I'm going to give another general comment, I know I was supposed to make comments, but I'm the chair, but, so at Land Division, we have had people that apply for severances and different things. And some of them have asked for some or all of their money back. And I'll be honest with you, they were virtually refused in every instance, were they not, Counsel Mackenzie? Because that was the rules of the day.
Well, given that.
If we want, if you want to make a motion to have this looked at, like in this particular case, you're more than welcome to.
I would make that motion.
Okay, so you want to make a motion that we look at official plan amendments? I'll let you.
And bringing back a report on the cost of the fees for this application for county council to consider.
Okay. And for this application, just only?
Yes, just this.
Okay. So do I have a second for that motion, and that would be Counselor Duncan? Last chance for discussion. Those in favor of that motion? One, two, four, six. That does not carry. Do I have somebody willing to do another motion, or do I just drop it? I see no other motion coming forward. So I guess that's the end of that discussion. Okay. Now I have a motion, that, that will put that down under other business. We don't have any announcements, I don't think. I would ask for a motion that the public meeting be adjourned at approximately nine twenty-nine. Counsel Wilhelm, Counsel Mackenzie. Those in favor? And that's carried. And then I need a motion that council, regular council reconvene at nine twenty-nine. Because we're still in the same minute, Counsel Wilhelm, Counsel McDermott, those in favor? That one's carried. Okay, so we're now back into regular session. And next on the list is a presentation from Jill Lewis from the Year in Perth Egg Science Center Steering Committee. Okay. And I know I'm not very sure, that's not Jill Lewis sitting down here. And she's on the screen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Here we go, now I can see better on my little screen here, so we're ready for your presentation, Jill, on the steering committee report here.
Super, thank you, I'm, I'm actually going to share my screen if that's okay, I have a short presentation that I'd like to share with you. I'm just going to get that going, I want to make sure that everybody can see. Okay, is that clear? Can everybody see that?
Very good.
Great, thank you, I just want to say good morning and thank you very much for the opportunity for me to share this information about the Huron Perth Egg Science Center project. I'm going to do a brief introduction of the project and explain what we've done so far, our accomplishments to date, and where we're moving next, and then what our request of Perth County Council is at this time. So the plan is through government grants, business and individual donations. Um, so the plan is through government grants, business and individual donations, partnerships, sponsorships, uh, to open an egg-focused science center in North Perth. It would be a registered charity, um, so any income generated from entrance fees, memberships, retail, that kind of thing, uh, would be invested back into programming for the community. So it's not a personal business idea. And it would give children and youth something for them, uh, while providing education and culture with the, the large focus on agriculture. And we're hoping that in turn it might help combat some of the ongoing issues we're seeing in our communities, such as substance abuse, youth retention, and the rural urban divide. The board consists of five members so far, um, and I am the chair. So I am actually uh, Perth County O P P officer. I am the school resource officer for Perth County, so I spend um, most of my time in the schools. Um, and then I do have two retired uh, teachers also helping out, as well as a project lead uh, for strategic philanthropy at Perimeter Institute and an office solutions manager from P B J Cleaning in Listowel. So uh, last year, we partnered with the municipality of North Perth to apply for an Ontario Trillium Foundation grant for the purpose of conducting a feasibility study. Uh, we received the grant and partnered with Lord Cultural Resources, who is the largest museum planning firm in the world. Uh, they were fantastic and found through the study that there are actually no children's museums or science centers in Canada with a strong agriculture focus. Uh, there is in Ottawa, a museum, but it's more a collections focused. It's less of a, a science center, but more uh, based on collections. So the recommendation from feasibility study was for us to change the concept from our original idea, which was a children's museum, to more of the egg science center, which would open up a broader audience. Um, and it would be the first of its kind in Canada, so a really unique opportunity for Perth and Huron County. And the estimated size from the study, they suggested we could sustain uh, buildings twenty-one thousand gross square feet. The estimated cost, including the exhibits, was estimated at thirteen point eight million dollars, based on new construction, which was recommended. Uh, and they thought we could have a potential opening of twenty twenty-four with an annual onsite attendance of forty-two thousand annually, as um, sort of an average uh, each year. So the earned income that would be generated through the admission, retails, memberships, that kind of thing, would likely cover about fifty-five percent of the annual operating budget, which is average for science centers. Um, and the remaining uh, operating funds would need to come from a combination of government and private supports. But given the agriculture focus of the science center, it will actually help lead to an higher-than-average support from private funders. We, and we've had a number of um, private and business um, potential funders approach us already, offering support. Um, but I'll talk about that in a little bit. So partnering with Huron County, given the size of the science center, it is looking uh, to be more of a regional center. So given that uh, you know, Huron has huge agriculture roots as well, they would be just a natural partner for us um, to do a, a project of this size. Uh, it would open up more potential funding for us, both private and government. Um, we're looking at field trips, so through the Adam Maitland School Board here on Perth Catholic, but also youth groups, four H. Um, we can offer that throughout all of Perth and Huron County, um, but also, I mean, surrounding, surrounding counties as well. Uh, if we're including Huron County in, in the project, it would create more interest from Huron County visitors, um, increasing our, our annual visitor rate. Uh, we could also include other science-related exhibits, and one thought that came up was about the salt mine, which would be pretty unique. Uh, and there are a lot of organizations, as you know, that are already joint, such as here on Perth Healthcare Alliance, C A S, United Way are all a joint Perth Huron, so. So as a result of the feasibility study recommendations, we were successful with North Perth Council. They voted unanimously in favor of donating land for the project, um, upon completion of a, a successful capital funding campaign. Um, we haven't decided on the land yet with council. Um, the spot that we have our eye on is on Benning Street West, which is right across from the new arena and the new elementary school and daycare. Um, it, it would be an ideal location for a number of reasons, but a big one would be the proximity to the intersection of two major highways, eighty-six and twenty-three. Uh, there'd be a lot of traffic coming through that area, it would be visible. Um, but it is also a space that's already known for kids. It is a safe area with the school and the arena right there. Um, and it is near existing retail and uh, like restaurants and food, uh, food establishments already, so. Uh, potential exhibits, so I, the content at this point, we're so early in the project still. Um, we are brainstorming ideas of what it could look like, uh, once it's created. These are just a couple of the ideas that we've come up with, but the neat thing is that we can actually make it suitable to whatever the community needs are at the time. We'll have a, a mixture of permanent exhibits and rotating exhibits. And some of the concepts that we've thought of already, I mean, for me, I would really like to see agriculture safety included uh, throughout the science center, however that might look, but also, I mean, some other topics that are really um, important right now. We're talking a lot about mental health in agriculture, indigenous agriculture, um, sustainable agriculture, anything like that. Um, but again, we can get input from the community, what they'd like to see. And then we're talking about a lot of benefits to Perth County here. So it would be an opportunity to do something really innovative and unique uh, for Perth and Huron Counties, but also within the agriculture community. It would become a destination for families to travel and come, come see it, um, and experience it. And it would highlight the community of Perth County that we already are so proud of. Our agriculture, our industry, our existing programs such as Community of Character uh, in North Perth. We already have so much to offer. Um, we want to make sure that we highlight all of that. It's possible that we could have space for early-on programs for young families. It'd be somewhere that people can go on a rainy or snowy day, especially for people who cannot travel uh, long distances because of road conditions or whatever. It'd be a community gathering space, and we're hoping it's going to be so welcoming for everybody of any background or experience. Education level doesn't matter, uh, ability doesn't matter, um, anything like that. It would just be s- somewhere where everybody is going to feel welcome, even if they don't have any agriculture experience. It's going to be um, somewhere where everybody can learn and experience together. And it would bring together culture, education, art, and play, um, all together in a fun space. And I mentioned field trips, so not just schools and youth groups, but also homeschools, daycares. Um, we can invite anybody like that. Now, with our Perth County Connect Transit System, it's a great opportunity for people to travel uh, to Listowel for, for the science center. Um, and it opens it up for people who maybe don't have transportation for themselves. The positive ticketing program in North Perth is a really great uh, program where kids are rewarded for positive behaviors with healthy um, rewards. So this could just be another option that's offered for kids. And and we're also thinking that it might be a place where we could provide resources, thinking like brochures for parents on all sorts of different parenting issues, whether it's uh, kids with different abilities or behavior issues, maybe mental health, parent health, anything like that. As the children are playing, um, parents are maybe taking a break and they see some pamphlets available uh, that they might take home or do some reading while they're waiting for the kids um, at the site there, so. Uh, economic development and recovery post-COVID nineteen, we're all talking about that and looking forward to the future. This is something that we hope will actually really help with, with that. It'll provide employment, uh, but also volunteer opportunities for both adults and students. I mentioned that we have a couple of retired teachers already involved. Um, but for students who are looking at post-secondary education, it would be a great opportunity to do a co-op or um, get some experience in a field that interests them. And we're hoping to offer scholarship opportunities as well. So youth attraction and retention, uh, talking about in Perth and Huron Counties as something that will help make youth feel a real part of the community and make them want to stay here and come back after they've maybe gone to school and come back and raise their family here. Um, but also re- retention and attraction within agriculture too. So we're hoping to build in- interest in the industry from kids and families who maybe don't come from an egg background. Get new people uh, interested in all the different careers and aspects of what agriculture has to offer. So our next steps, we are working right now to grow our board of directors. Uh, we have an application process that uh, we have started and launched that, so we're working on advertising and getting more people to uh, apply with uh, lots of different backgrounds and experiences, um, to help build our knowledge base on the board. Uh, we're also working on building partnerships, so with Perth County, this is part of that. We're also going to be presenting to Huron County uh, later in October. And then I recently had a meeting with representatives from the University of Wealth, and they're very excited about the project. Um, they have strong agriculture roots as well. Um, there, we're looking at what that collaboration might look like in the future. But they were very keen on, on moving forward with uh, with us as well. We're going to need to develop a budget and business plan based on uh, the recommendations and results of the feasibility study. So they gave us a lot to think about and a lot of uh, next steps to focus on. Um, and then from there, we will begin our capital funding campaign, um, after that. So at this time, we're requesting a Perth County Council to allow for collaboration between the Perth County, specifically the economic development team and the Huron Perth Ag Science Center Steering Committee. And we're looking at that possibly looking like five hours approximately per month of time, so that would allow for questions, advice, research, support for our project. And I thank you very much for your time and for the presentation and your consideration, and I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Jill. If you could just take down the screen share, and I think that's perfect. So questions on this uh, presentation or comments? Counselor A.
Is, is Meredith watching right now?
Probably.
I, I saw where it finally got to the bottom about, I think this is something that we'd work with uh, Meredith's group and economic development. Where'd she go? We, when you hit on, we do already have a farm safety committee. A lot of these committees, business and retention, we're already doing all that already. So there's Meredith, um. So you're not reinventing the wheel. Meredith is your best person. Could you, could I see, there she is. She's back. I'm Meredith. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm just, the numbers will, will dazzle me how uh, the building can be thirteen point eight million dollars, government's building it, of course, instead of a regular person. We uh, we almost have that size for two point eight million, our new office in town here. Um, but of course, that's something different. Uh, but Meredith, can, can Jim, can I ask if Meredith could respond?
Yes, I was just gonna, good morning, Meredith. Uh, you've been listening to this presentation, I'm sure. Any comments from your perspective?
Well, I, I think it's a, you know, thank you, uh, Warden and Counsel and Counselor A. Uh, I think this is a fantastic project. Um, I am just concerned with staff's time, uh, as we are stretched fairly thin right now. Uh, but also think that this would be an excellent asset for uh, both um, our agriculture community for economic development and promoting uh, egg careers, um, as well as uh, um, encouraging um, youth retention. So I do think it's really important. I'm just, I'm, I'm worried about our, our staff complement right now um, with that five hours per month participation.
Counselor Callum.
Yes, thank you through you, uh, Warden Aitchison, and good morning Jill and Meredith. And Jill, thank you for your presentation. As, as we all know here, that uh, North Perth especially is really excited about this uh, going forward. And I guess what I'm asking, and on behalf of uh, North Perth, that it, it is, it's great in, in the northern part, is that the economic uh, development uh, of the county can offer some degree of support. Uh, Meredith, that you could work with Jill and come back to the county and we can offer some support. Uh, maybe it's not five hours, but any support uh, that you can offer would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, other comments or questions, Counselor, Deputy Warden Nagus?
Uh, I do realize, uh, you know, Meredith's uh, group is very, very busy. What about the North Perth Economic Development? Are they involved as well? In this process, like maybe they can be the liaison and, and um, do more of it and Meredith can use or stay out of it, or, you know, I get Meredith, like, we don't want to tax staff anymore. We're either going to have to find more staff to help, or, or, or not be able to do some of these things, unfortunately.
Counselor Callum has a response for that.
Yes, a supplementary, um, so to answer your question, uh, War- or Deputy Warden Egits, I think earlier on in the presentation, Jill had that uh, our economic development coordinator, Kim Couch, is working close with her, so we are involved. We're just reaching out to, to see if the, the county could offer some support as well. So yes, to answer your question, we are working with Jill and her group.
And if I read this correctly, in that presentation, they want a collaboration with that, the county level, with Perth and Huron County, not just lower tiers?
Well, I think it would uh, make more sense at a county level. Especially if Huron County's involved, I think it would be a, a good combination with Huron Perth Counties.
I think I saw Counselor Aite's hand go up, I could be wrong.
Just, I would love to see the committee go to the uh, Ontario Agriculture Museum in Milton. Um, and then to her, John Kastner has a great agricultural display at our museum in Stratford also. Um, if you've ever been there, Doug Callum's been there many times. So there is, there isn't an Ontario Museum of Agriculture in Ontario. Uh, the other group probably couldn't find it, but it's in Milton, um, right off the highway. You see it every time you drive by the four oh one. So I've been there many times, taken my kids there when they were little. Um, so that's something to start with. I think you're doing, you're doing more of a science center than a museum, I believe. I don't think a museum is what it's actually, it's more of a science center. Because there is museums there already for agriculture. Um, yeah, just have a look at them first.
Counselor Will.
Further to uh, Counselors A, I couldn't help but think, uh, as there's been discussion with uh, John Kastner, uh, the museum, uh, when you talk about the history of agriculture, uh, he does have a very good display, and I think that he should certainly be part of this uh, communication and involvement.
He might be a good resource to have involved. Jill, Jill, do you have any comment there? Pick your hands up.
Yes, actually, John participated in the feasibility study. He was interviewed um, by Lord Cultural Resources during the study. Um, and we, we are hoping to partner with them as well and sort of um, build each other up and, and work together as partners.
Okay, uh, other comments or questions? I don't see any hands, just double checking again here. Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the presentation from the Year in Perth Egg Science Center Steering Committee. And then I have the word "and that", so what would we like to see as "and that we" participate or cooperate in a development of this, or what word do you want in there? Or what words do you want in there? Counselor Callum.
Something through that the county.
Collaborate?
Collaborate and offer a degree of support working with this committee.
Okay.
Something like that.
So I'm going to say "and that" uh, Perth County offer or collaborate with this group.
Through economic development.
Economic development to the degree of which we are able to provide service.
Yes.
How's that?
I like that.
Okay. So I have that motion made by Counselor Callum. So that doesn't necessarily give you five hours a month, but it may some months and it may not. Do I have a second for that motion? That would be Counselor Wilhelm over here. Okay, last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor of that motion, that's carried. Okay, and I just have one further thing to add, Jill, so this is a great, I think it's a great idea, but I'm not supposed to say much here. But uh, you, you talked about doing a business plan and whatnot. So, look, I'm kind of the stickler on business plans to some degree. So if you want to come back to council and look for some sort of financial support, you would have to include a business plan and whatnot before you would get really considered in our next budget, which would be the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Does the rest of council agree with that? I see a bunch of heads going up and down. Do I see any going sideways? No. Okay, so yeah, if you guys come up with your business plan and whatnot, that would be great, if you want to ask for some sort of financial contribution.
Thank you very much for that. We, we will follow that through with that. Um, and actually, I mean, it is possible that we may ask for funds in the future. Um, but at this point, we're not, we're not quite at that stage. Um, so once we know further down the road what things look like, then we, we may return. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Not seeing anyone. Well, thank you, Jill, and. Not seeing anyone. Well, thank you, Jill, and we're gonna move on to the next topic. Thank you. Okay, next topic is presentation from Berryfield Swift Monthly Project Update. I think we're just loading them up here. And to be honest, maybe this was something I was kind of looking for. See where we're at on that, especially after the recent announcements.
Morning, Barry.
Morning. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you fine and dandy, so we're ready for your update.
Excellent. Um, I've got a short presentation to give here, so let me, let me bring it in. Yeah, if you let me know when you can see my screen.
We're good.
Um, you can see the the presentation here, all right? Um, so I want to go over a few things today. I want to go over a a quick update as to to where we are with the five SWIFT projects that have been awarded in Perth County. Um, I also want to take some time to talk to you a little bit about the other government programs, the other government broadband programs specifically uh, that may or may not impact Perth County and kind of give you an update on at least our understanding of them, noting that they are federal and provincial programs. They're not SWIFT programs, but we do have a little bit of insight into them, so I'd like to convey what I do know. All right, starting with the uh, the the SWIFT projects, I think everybody knows, last time I was here, I I told you about the five projects that we had awarded uh, in Perth County. Um, they are listed here. You can see the various colors. There is one that is in Perth East here, one in Perth West over here, a number of them that are, or two of them rather, that are are in North Perth, and then one that kind of straddles North Perth and Perth East. Um, where we are on those projects right now, um, the the Tucker Smith Project, so I'll kind of flip back and forth here. The Tucker Smith Project, this green one right here. Uh, construction is started. It is on track to finish at the end of this year, finished construction, that is, and then be fully in service by March thirty-first of next year, which is the uh, the contractual date that we had signed up to with with Tucker Smith. So that project, actually, all of the projects are on schedule to complete as as scheduled. Uh, you will note down here, there's a couple where the design are a bit delayed, but that's not impacting any of the construction. So the next project, which is Whitman Six, this is the pink one up here. It's very small. It's a one kilometer of fiber, a very small project, but you can kind of see it there. Uh, it's, it's started construction on August ninth as planned, and again, that one is uh, scheduled to be done by the end of the year, construction, and then in service by the end of the first quarter. Uh, the next one is the Mornington Project, Mornington One, which is down here in East Perth. Uh, Perth East, I think. Sorry, I got that backwards. Maybe, I don't know. I get confused on those, so pardon me. This one has, um, again, it started last month, September fourteenth, so it's just getting underway. Uh, expected to be done construction by the end of the first quarter next year, and then i- in service uh, in in the first quarter as well. Just, just so you know, the difference between the construction complete and in service is really a a process that that SWIFT runs, where we go out, we do an inspection of the uh, of the construction to make sure they put in what they said they were going to put in. We do some testing with them to make sure that the service that they said they were going to be able to provide is actually being provided. Um, there's nothing stopping the ISPs from actually offering service once the construction is complete, though. So some of them do that, some of them wait to the very end. Uh, the next project is Mornington Eight, um, or or Whitman, sorry, um, this one up here in in North Perth. It is, um, uh, again, it's scheduled to start construction in April, so it's Q two of next year. Uh, they're they're a little bit delayed on the design, but that's, that's more of a matter of they've got time to do the design before construction starts than than them being behind, right? Uh, same for the next one here, which is thirty-two, which is again, kind of straddles the two lower tiers up here. So again, all of these projects are are on schedule. They they, there's nothing indicating that the construction of those will be delayed at all, so we continue to monitor, to work with the ISPs uh, to make sure that any issues they're having were addressing and that they're moving forward. Um, just some notes down here, again, construction underway of three of the five projects. Uh, two of them will be done this year, the other three will be into next year. Um, some issues that we're running into are the the GRCA and MTO permits are causing some challenges sometimes, but uh, we've, we've got some pretty good inroads there now, so it doesn't seem to be stopping anything or pushing the 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 schedules out at all. Um, sometimes we do run into delay so that we need to to escalate either through the province or through those organizations. Um, any questions on the on the projects themselves before I move on?
Questions from council? I can't see y'all, so you're gonna have to speak up if you got a question. Not hearing anything, Barry, carry on.
Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about the uh, the other funding programs that are out there. Um, if I go back to the map here, it's, you know, it's it's fairly obvious that SWIFT is uh, helping to solve part of the problem, but we're not going to to solve the entire problem. Um, with the money we had, we, you know, obviously didn't have enough money to do all, um, all, you know, solve the problem for everyone everywhere. Um, having said that, there are a number of other government uh, programs that are in place right now. Some of them are are awarding projects and some of them are just getting started. Uh, the first two I'd like to talk about are the UBF, the Universal Broadband Fund, um, run by the federal government and the ICON program run by the provincial government. They've coordinated their programs together, and a number of weeks ago, I want to say five weeks ago, maybe, uh, maybe six, um, they did announce one point two billion dollars worth of projects that they had awarded in Ontario. Two hundred and fifty-two million of those were in southwestern Ontario. Um, it's very difficult to say exactly where those projects are, though. So there were no maps released. They they issued some place names, um, which were problematic because many of them were duplicated. I'll I'll show you down here below the the duplication. Um, the the named places, some of them are already served. So I I think what they were trying to do was get some information out there by naming these places and and not yet having the maps available. They kind of took the the closest named place they could find and said, you know, the project's going to be in that area. So, um, with the announcements that were made, I I picked out five projects that are 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 part of, that are in include Perth County in them. They're not necessarily a hundred percent Perth County. It could be, as you can see here, some of them that fall outside of the county. Um, and and that's fine, but the the five I picked out, I've highlighted the the named places that are in Perth. Again, it's very difficult to tell you exactly where these pro- projects are going to be built. We don't yet have a map like this where we can show exactly where they 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 will be. Um, I have spoken to the province. I know they're working on getting down to that level of detail, but you can imagine with one point two billion dollars worth of projects to announce, um, you know, that's going to take some time. So they they are working on that. We expect within the coming weeks or months that they'll be providing kind of the next level of of granularity and the details of where those projects will be, will be built. Um, you will notice a number of of named places that are in Perth here. Um, you know, probably, you know, there's, uh, you know, eight, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen million dollars worth of of funding that was provided that is included in in Perth. Um, some of these places you'll note are are already served, uh, previous to SWIFT. Some of them are being served by SWIFT. So again, don't take the name place as necessarily the center of where that dot would go on a map necessarily, but think probably the the surrounding underserved geography. Um, if you were to look at it that way, I think you'd have a pretty good idea of where these these projects uh, might land eventually. So again, two hundred and fifty-two million dollars in southwestern Ontario, we're looking for the province and the feds to provide more detail on exactly where those projects are going to be. Uh, this leaves us with the um, the the biggest program out there. So the with within the last year, the provincial government has has announced another two point eight billion dollars, um, adding to the one billion they already had in their broadband fund, which is good news for all of us. Um, it's it's kind of the first serious investment in in broadband that is aimed at solving the problem for everyone everywhere. So the 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 overriding goal of of what's called the Accelerated High-Speed Internet Program is to provide broadband service for everybody in Ontario who currently doesn't have it. And when I say broadband service, think of that fifty-ten uh, service, so fifty megabytes of of download speed and ten up. That's that's their their bottom threshold. Having said that, where there's fiber being implemented, you know, you'll go all the way up to a gigabit, uh, even even beyond that in some cases. So, um, how they're doing this, and and I want to know, and I want to jump down to the bottom here, just that there are, there are things I can talk about and there are things I can't talk about. This is a provincially run program. I've signed an NDA, as has every other participant. Um, so I can't show you the maps. I can't talk about the 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 exact details of the procurement, but I can talk in generalities, and I can talk about the process itself. So the the province has broken Ontario down into ninety-seven lots, so different um, areas within the 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 province. They've split them up into ninety-seven. They've set a reserve price, they've established a reserve price for each lot, and the reserve price represents the amount of subsidy that's available to the ISPs in that lot. They will then run a reverse au- auction, and and sorry, let me back up. They've designated each lot as either a wired, think of that as fiber, or a wireless lot. So the the idea is that they've come up with a reserve price for a a wired lot that is based on what they think it would cost to put in fiber in that lot. If it's a wireless lot, they've done the same thing, based, you know, come up with a reserve price based on on their estimate of what it would cost to to build that lot with wireless. They'll then do a reverse auction, and the the participants are eligible to bid on that lot. And let's say, just for example, if the reserve price is twenty million dollars and they get three bids, one is for twenty million, one is for nineteen, one is for eighteen, the lowest bid wins, right? It's it's the ISP that's willing to do the work in that lot for the lowest price, the lowest, the lowest bid. Um, currently, they've issued an RFQ for a a request for qualifications where they are onboarding qualified um, ISPs to participate in the RFP. The RFP is scheduled to come out in November, so next month, it's it's imminent. And, um, if I've got my dates right, by January or February, they would have awarded all of the the um, the ninety-seven lots throughout Ontario. So important to note that when there is a lot that is being auctioned, one ISP will win that lot. It's not going to be broken up into multiple ISPs into multiple projects like the SWIFT project was. It will be one ISP bids on that lot, they win it, and they are responsible to provide service to every premises within that lot that is not currently served. So you see the map I've got here of Perth, the red overlay kind of represents the areas that have access to to broadband currently. So in the in the um, the provincial program, it would be these areas that are 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 kind of this turquoise color here that are being auctioned off. Um, I can't go into details of how or if Perth is broken down into one lot or multiple lots or 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 what. Um, but that brings me to my next point. Because I'm not allowed to share that information, but because of the NDA, um, Perth does have the ability to to actually sign up under the RFQ. They've they've just extended it to the end of the month. I would encourage that you that you have staff actually go and register um, as a participant. You don't have to put in an application or anything, but it's the only way that we know of right now that you're going to get the maps. We have, through the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, we have asked the minister to actually release the maps to all of the upper and lower tier municipalities in Ontario. I think it's important that you have the opportunity to see what's being proposed for your area and to either support it or comment on it or or whatever the case may be. Um, again, I can't show them to you, though. So if you want them now, I would say spend the sixty dollars. I've sent an email out to each of the CAOs in the in the SWIFT region, giving them the link and the the kind of instructions as to how to get the the, um, get signed up for the the RFQ. And once they get signed up, they'll be able to go in, pull the maps off themselves, and they'll be able to see um, and and talk to you about what's um, you know, whether whether this is something you want to support, or if it's something you want to comment on, or if you're neutral, whatever the case may be. But I I I strongly encourage you to do that. It's it's sixty dollars, and it's, I think, sixty dollars well spent. We believe that eventually the the minister will open up the maps to everybody, but I'm not, you know, I I'm not confident when that will happen. So again, we're on a tight timeline here because the RFP is is being issued uh, in November. So I think we've got a very short window to comment if we choose to. That's all I've got for my presentation. Um, I tried to be uh, quick there, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thanks, Barry. Uh, questions from counselors? Comments from counselors? I don't see any, just a quick question, not really a question, more of a comment, Barry. So that uh, money was issued the last week of July, those announcements for the funding?
Sure.
Because uh, I was, and the reason I know that, I was busy doing, we and the Beacon or somebody phoned me up and wanted me to comment on it. And I says, well, I'm gonna be honest with you, I haven't even had a chance to read it yet. I've been kind of busy. So he was writing off the different centers that were gonna get fiber out of this announcement. And I said, well, that's interesting. Pretty well, all the ones you've said so far already have it. And that was like St. Paul Station, like Quadro did that two, three, four years ago, and actually put a a building up on the uh, parkland at uh, right in St. Paul's for further distribution in the Stratford. But I'm glad you clarified how that went, because uh, I was beginning to think that this money was issued to these people, and they were really gonna try and do something that was already done.
No, I I would, I would ask you to be patient until they come out with the actual maps, and then you'll be able to see exactly where they're funding.
Okay, and uh, as far as registering, I think that's a great idea. Does council have any objection to that? Pay our sixty dollars and we can get the maps, because I think this is gonna be pivotal moving forward.
Yeah. Um, and and just another comment, once, once you have those maps, if you want, uh, if you want me to come back and and talk about them, explain anything, answer any questions you may have in them, I'll do the the best I can.
Okay, and the other comment I had when that reporter phoned me up, I said, it's great that they're doing, and I used uh, our previous Minister of Agriculture's comment, it's great they've got all the low-hanging fruit picked up, it's time to get more down the side roads.
Yeah. And and I do believe that
Get accomplished.
That that is the purpose of of this accelerated high-speed uh, internet program. Um, I I believe they're they're intending to do everybody and everywhere.
So we hope that's what it accomplishes, anyway. I've seen where it hasn't before. Anyway, any questions for Barry or comments? And if not, I know Barry's busy, so we're gonna let him go. Looks like you're good to go, Barry. Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Okay, I have a motion here, County Council, receive the presentation, SWIFT Monthly Project Update, August two thousand and twenty-one. Move by. Counsel, Deputy Warden Aggits, second by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, we're gonna move on, and so we're moving on to staff reports, and we're moving into finding services. And first up will be the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment, number two hundred, which we've had on the docket, but now we're dealing with it for either approval or dismissal, and Sean Jimenez is giving that report, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so, um, I don't want to repeat what I've I've gone through here previously, but essentially, this was just the applicant is looking to establish a second dwelling unit in an accessory building that is less than five years old.
Thanks, Sean. Yeah, this is no sense repeating what we've already been through for the sake of time. So I'm gonna read off a motion here, and if yous want further elaboration, we will, but the motion says that the Perth County Council receives a report entitled, "Application for County Official Plan Amendment Number Two Hundred" by Lucas Lauren and Robin Level, dated October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, affecting lands described as block fifteen, registered plan five, six, five, Elmer Ward, municipality of North Perth. registered plan 565 Elmer Ward, municipality of North Perth, 168 Fisher Avenue Atwood, prepared by the planner for information. And the County of Perth approved official plan amendment number 200 by Lucas Lauren and Robin, Robin Level, affecting lands described as Lot 15, registered plan 565, Elmer Ward, municipality of North Perth, 168 Fisher Avenue Atwood. Move by. Councillor Duncan, second by Deputy Warden Aga. Last chance for comments or questions. Seeing none. Those in favor? Let's carry. Perfect. And next we have um, the County of Perth Official Plan, Section 6.3A, Second Dwelling Units Update. And are you doing that Sean or Sally doing that? Or both of you?
Um, I can just provide a quick summary of that as well. So again, uh, again, uh, the, this council had requested a report from staff with respect to Section 6.3A of the County of Perth Official Plan, which provides policies for second dwelling units within Perth County. Uh, now, much of the content of the staff report was spoken in, to in detail earlier today during the public meeting for Official Plan Amendment OPA 200. Um, again, I don't want to repeat the same information, but of course, if there is any questions to that regard, please do not hesitate to ask. Um, I do want to point out that the new County of Perth Official Plan um, that is still being drafted will include policies relating to additional residential units or ARUs with less restrictions than what is currently permitted in the existing County of Perth Official Plan. However, planning staff feel that given the current housing climate, an amendment to update the existing policies that is contained within the current County Official Plan ahead of the new official plan is prudent. As such, it is staff's recommendation that Perth County Council direct planning staff to initiate an amendment to the County of Perth Official Plan to remove the five-year age requirement of an accessory building containing a second dwelling unit from Section 6.3A of the County of Perth Official Plan. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Sean. Questions or comments for Sean on that? Uh, Deputy Warden Aga.
I'm okay with what we're doing, but I'm just wondering, what was the rationale that we put that on there? Or whoever put that on there, why there was a time limit? Does anyone remember? Was there a reason why there was a time limit? The building had to be so, so?
Sally, has Sally got her hand up there?
Sean, if you're ready, you go ahead. I don't want to steal it from you.
Well, no, I was just gonna state that, I mean, previously, it was the reason that we believe this five-year requirement was on there was the fact that it was perceived that um, initiating a second dwelling unit in a building that was already existing was less intrusive than, for example, initiating or um, starting a new building and then including that. Um, so having the building exist for several years and then accommodating it just seemed like it was a little bit more um, of an appropriate way to do it at that time.
Okay, no, I just wondered what, I couldn't remember why that was ever put in place, so. But I do support what you're asking, so.
Other comments or questions? I don't see any. Okay, I got a motion. Perth County Council receives the County of Perth Official Plan, Section 6.3A, Second Dwelling Units Update Report, prepared by the planner for information. And that Perth County Council direct planning staff to initiate an amendment to the County of Perth Official Plan to remove the five-year age requirement of an accessory building containing a second dwelling unit from Section 6.3A of the official plan. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Deputy Warden Aga, seconded by Councillor McDermott. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor of that motion? That's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. And then we have the Request for Extension of Draft Plan of Approval, 7.13. And that would be Sean again. You've been a busy fellow this morning, Sean.
Yes. Yeah, so this one is uh, from me as well. Um, just give me one second. Um, yeah, so the property owner is seeking an extension of draft plan approval for the Lunar subdivision, file number NP0401, for a minimum of one year. Now, this is in North Perth. Um, on October 20th, 2004, Perth County Council granted draft plan approval for the subdivision. One of the conditions of the approval stipulated that the approval was for a period of five years, and if the conditions were not fulfilled, or if the approval was not extended, the draft plan approval would lapse. If the approval lapses, the Planning Act does not provide the approval authority with the ability to reactivate the approval. Therefore, the file would be closed. Now, several extensions have been granted previously for this subdivision, with the most recent on October 20th of 2019, with an additional two years provided, um, and is now expiring on October 20th of 2021. The property owner is seeking the draft plan approval be extended for at least another one year period to satisfy the conditions. In order to approve the extension, a decision must be made by the approval authority, which is Perth County Council, prior to October 20th of this year. Uh, the draft plan of subdivision encompasses an area of approximately 16.4 hectares or 40.6 acres. The draft plan proposes a number of residential blocks, which are intended for approximately 220, 23 to 248 total units, consisting of a mix of single detached, semi-detached and rowhouse dwellings. Staff notes that substantial works continues on the file in anticipation, in anticipation of the registration of the first phase, which has been discussed in more detail in the staff report prepared for council. Uh, as I noted, several extensions have been granted, and given the length of time since the original draft plan approval, staff are of the opinion that a one-year extension is ample time to clear the remaining conditions. Planning staff have discussed in the extension request with North Perth staff, and it is evident that works on the file is progressing toward the draft approved plan. And we do recognize the fast approaching lapsing date. Planning staff and North Perth staff are of the opinion that the one-year extension for this plan is appropriate. Now, however, anything beyond a one-year, beyond the one-year should consider potential revisions to the plan as a new County of Perth Official Plan may be in effect at that time. Uh, as such, it is staff's recommendation that Perth County Council approve a 12-month extension of draft plan approval for the Lunar subdivision, expiring on October 20th, 2022. Uh, I would like to note that as a result of the fast approaching lapsing date, and when this extension request was submitted, the staff report to County, count, excuse me, to North Perth Council, sorry, sorry. The staff report to County Council and the re- recommendation for County Council was prepared prior to presenting the extension, presenting the extension request to North Perth Council. The request for the extension was presented to North Perth Council earlier this week, and North Perth Council supported the request, however, noted that if the extension is granted by County Council, the proponent should be compelled to reach the upper limit of the approved unit range, which I believe is 248 units total. Um, planning staff understands the, and appreciates North Perth Council's consideration to this regard. If County Council chooses to revise the conditions, planning staff feel that a range is still appropriate as it provides some flexibility that may be necessary to efficiently complete the development. Um, as such, if the goal is to reach the upper limit of the approved unit count, I might suggest keeping a range but reducing the spread. For example, rather than the approval being between 223 units and 248 units, the lower end or the minimum can be a cre- increase to, let's say, 240 units. Uh, so this, the range would be between 240 units and 248 units. This would give them the flexibility that will be helpful when accommodating, for example, infrastructure or easements. Uh, if the number is very specific, it could potentially trigger another modification before final approval to make things work out. Um, so that's just my suggestion if you do go with that, but um, staff does, so I recommend approving a 12-month extension. Thank you.
Thanks Sean. Comments or questions, uh, Councillor Callum?
Yes, uh, through you, Warden, each and then, thank you for your report, Sean, and, and yeah, this uh, no doubt has been a frustrating development uh, for council. I'm 15 years, that we've gone through three mayors. And it's, it's, yeah, one's no longer with us, but anyway, um, we, we need to get this moving, and it was strongly suggested at Monday night's council meeting that we go to the maximum amount, which I believe is 248 units. I, I don't recall, maybe I'm wrong, uh, Councillor Duncan, maybe you can help me out here about the minimum. It was pretty clear that we wanted to go to the maximum 248 because of the density. That being said, with Sean's comments here, I have no problem uh, changing it to abide in case there are easements from the 240 to 248, but if uh, Councillor Duncan would like to chime in on this, I, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Callum. Councillor Duncan?
Yeah, I think it was uh, definitely from our council, they, they wanted to see the maximum density on this development, but uh, like, I agree with Councillor Callum as well, we, we can go with the 240 to 248, that would be, that would be suitable as well, and give the developer some flexibility to uh, to move ahead as well.
25, so.
Okay, other comments or questions? I don't see any. Uh, I have a motion here, and what we do with it, oh, here we go, too many papers. Uh, and I would agree with Councillor Callum and Councillor Duncan. Uh, I'd like to see it at the high end myself as well for the density, but if you don't give them a little flexibility, then hopefully they don't need that much flexibility, and maybe they'll come in at the 246 or something, Mark. Put it that way. So, I have a motion. The Perth County Council receives a request for extension of draft plan approval for Lunar subdivision file number NP0401, report and that Perth County Council approves a 12-month extension of draft plan approval for the Lunar subdivision file number NP0401, part of lots 41 and 42, concession one, Elmer Ward, 810 Tremaine Avenue, municipality of North Perth, and that in doing so, the draft plan of approval for this development will lapse on October 20th, 2022. And that's all I've got written here, but I would like to see added, and the range of dwellings would be from 240 to 248. Can I add that to that? Is that okay with you, Sean and Sally? I'm seeing a nod from Sally. So I'm gonna add that to that, that the range of units be from 240 to 248, and hopefully higher to the 248. Because you can't keep using up land, because you're not gonna get it forever. Okay, do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councillor Callum. Seconded by Councillor Duncan. Last chance for comments. Oh, Councillor, right?
Just, I wanna, I wanna make sure, so if they let this, okay, so 18 years is a long time. Um, so next September or October, if they don't have it done, we're starting them over again. Is that what we're talking? Okay, everybody shaking their head? I just wanted to make sure, because I think I've been here three times that they've got extensions now. And it, okay, yep, perfect.
I, I wouldn't think that, that council would take a dim view of this coming back for an extension. And I think North Perth Council would as well. So, the motion's on the floor, and with the limit from 240 to 248. We have a mover and a seconder. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Perfect. Thanks Sean. Oh, Councillor Callum?
Yes, through you, Warden, each, and I have just one question I'd like to, or comment I'd like to make. Is uh, Sean McCollum online with us?
Not, well, maybe not yet. He's probably listening.
Oh yeah, he is.
He will be shortly, for sure. We've got a road just here? Morning, John. We're not quite at public works, but we have a question for you with regards to the extension of a draft plan of approval from Councillor Callum.
Thank you through you, Warden, each, and good morning, John. John, I just have a comment with regards to what we just approved for the extension. So at the lot, I believe it's line 85 in Tremaine, um, what intersection improvements will we be making moving forward with that? It's, it's very busy. Is that on the schedule as well?
Uh, thank you. Through the warden, uh, we do have budgeted in our Capital Roads 10-year forecast, uh, traffic lights for that location.
Okay.
So there is, uh, we, we have looked at that. Obviously, something like that, we would be looking for a traffic study to uh, um, to verify everything.
In roughly timeframe?
I keep moving it out every year, so you'll probably see it to, in the 2022 budget to and just kind of setting aside the money so that we're, we're ready to go. It's earmarked for that when, when things are necessary.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
So you made the comment, you'd like to see a traffic study? Yeah, so perhaps maybe you might tell the developer to get on that, because that isn't gonna happen overnight.
Right.
And he's only got one year. Basically. Okay. Thanks, John. We'll get back to you here shortly. Um, what time is it? It's 10:28. We're gonna take, I was hoping to get to a little session, but we're gonna take a five or seven, eight minute break, just so everybody stands, stretch and move. And we will reconvene, I'm gonna say, in 10 minutes. That works for everyone? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're back in business here, folks. We've still got three councillors blocked out there, but time to get going again. And we're all back. Okay, so we're gonna move on, uh, Corporate Services, 7.2.1, uh, Archives General Reserve for Unbudgeted Expenses, and I believe Betty Jo is doing that?
Morning.
Morning, Betty Jo. We're ready for the report.
Thank you, Warden. Um, hello, everyone, and um, thank you for your time today. The report that you have, uh, asks that council approve use The report that you have asks that council approve use of funds from the Archives General Reserve, which has sufficient funds to cover the cost, to cover an unbudgeted but necessary expense to keep the native plant garden at the north end of the Archives property in an attractive and accessible state. So, Mr. Warden, through you, I'd be happy to respond to any questions about this request.
Okay, do we have any questions for Betty Jo? Not seeing any, so I've got a motion here. I'm going to read it. Perth County Council approved allocation of sixty-eight hundred dollars from the Archives General Reserves for an unbudgeted expense in two thousand and twenty-one to replace plants in the garden next to Highway Eight at the north end of the Stratford Perth Archives site. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councillor Willhame, second by Councillor McKenzie. Those in favor? It's carried. Perfect. Way to go, Betty Jo. Thank you. Get those plants going, or are they already in? I thought they were in, but anyway, we're good. So next, we're moving on for the Marvin Smith Perth County Inspectors Report. Tyler, you're doing that?
Thank you. So through the warden, current council, today is the August twenty twenty-one forestry inspectors report. Marvin Smith, forestry inspector, conducted four inspections. Three were as a response to submission of the NOIs and one as a response to a complaint. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to pass this one to Marvin at this time.
Questions to pass along to Marvin Smith? Not seeing any hands. Okay, I have a motion, Perth County receives the August two thousand and twenty-one forestry inspectors report for information moved by Councillor Willhame, second by Councillor Duncan. Those in favor? That's carried. And we're moving on to seven point two point three, county council meeting schedule. Tyler?
Perfect. So through the word again, current council, the two thousand and twenty-two county council meeting schedule. It follows similar years this year as last year as well. As noted for July, August, September, there is the one meeting for the summer schedule. It is important to note that the November fifteenth meeting, or sorry, that the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-six term of office commences. So with that being the case, instead of having the warden's election, the first meeting in December, we'll have to do the installation of council and warden's election the first meeting after that. So that would be the November seventeenth meeting. So that is noted. Also to note is the first regular scheduled meeting of June might conflict with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference if any council would like to attend that. So those are the two things that I would like to note with this report. If there's any questions or comments, be happy to take those at this time.
Comments or questions for Tyler on this report? Not seeing any. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty-two county council meeting schedule report and that council approves the two thousand and twenty-two council meeting schedule as presented. Moved by Councillor Willhame, second by Councillor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. Okay, no, something does come up, there is a potential we could change a date, but that is for now.
Correct. Through the order, we can make adjustments as necessary. This is just to give public notice.
Okay, so the next is the CPI increases for two thousand and twenty-two. And we're going to need to bring Corey up for that one? Morning, Corey.
Good morning, Warden, council. The report in front of you is essentially looking at what the two thousand and twenty-two increase for CPI will be. You'll notice within the table in the report, inflation for the first three quarters of the reporting period were relatively low due to the pandemic, with the last quarter picking up and essentially adding about point five to the overall increase. Last year was a one point four eight percent increase. We're looking at a one point four six percent increase to the two thousand and twenty-two budget and year. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Corey on this report? Not seeing anyone. Glad to see everybody's in sync because we have this reported per South Council meeting on Tuesday and we have the exact same figure. So everything's good. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives a two thousand and twenty-two CPI increase report and the county council approves the rate of one point four six as an increase to the county non-union salary grid and remuneration for members of council and committees effective January one, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Willhame, Deputy Warden Naget, second. Willhame answer questions? Last chance. Those in favor? Let's carry unanimously. Thanks, Corey. And then we're moving on to the Q two operating and variance report. I'll let you carry on.
Yes, we do thank the province on the continued support with through COVID. We're still continuing to be impacted by COVID throughout two thousand and twenty-one. We do have money still in the coffers for, for the two thousand and twenty-one and we're anticipating to have some money going to two thousand and twenty-two in relation to potential COVID costs into that. Just another highlight is that winter maintenance is, is looking to be on budget for the two thousand and twenty-one year. And to highlight, we essentially spent forty-nine percent of our budget mid-year this year. Compared to last year, we've spent about a forty-nine and a half percent. If there's any other questions to the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments for Corey on this report? Councillor Naget, Deputy Warden Naget?
I'd like to see that we get the quarterly reports a little quicker, like we're, we're in October now, we're talking June. I'd like to see Septembers, like by next month at the latest, if we could. To me, it's too far from when we've seen it. Also, do we have to have twenty-twenty's in there when you're trying to read across these lines? Some of them, unless you get it huge on your computer, it's hard to get across to what we really want to see in two thousand and twenty-one. So is it really necessary to have, have twenty? It, that year's over. We can't do what, we can't change what's going on. So I don't believe that we need to see two thousand and twenty information anymore. I just need to see two thousand and twenty-two. But I do want to see quarter three long before the end of this year.
Other comments or questions? Any response to that one, Corey?
Yes, that is correct. It would, I was hopefully to get this back in the, the previous month and it did not get into the agenda for that timeframe. I'm looking to do the forecast for the year end in the next month to get to council when we start discussing the two thousand and twenty-two budget.
Just on a personal note for myself, I like seeing two thousand and twenty there, two thousand and twenty-one. I like it for comparison. Personally, that's me personally. Anyway, I have a motion here, Perth County Council receives the Q Deputy Warden Naget?
So if you leave it there, do you think you could flip it and see two thousand and twenty-one first and then two thousand and twenty? Just to make it
Do that.
That might make it just a little
Not going to modify the report to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the Q two operating and capital variance mid-year financials report. Moved by Councillor Callum, seconded by Councillor Willhame. Those in favor? That is carried. And your budget for the winter snow removal is in line right now, but you realize you'll be getting snow the last couple of days of October. The naked lady was out in bloom around August the sixteenth. Six, six weeks later, you will have snow. It never fails. So there you go. Okay, we're moving on. Thanks, Corey. Public Works, Coronation Royal Oak Trees, Perth County Courthouse. And that is John McClellan, so we'll get him back up. Didn't remember if it was Bill or John. I knew he was in one of them. John, we're back.
Thank you, Warden Herson. Good morning, council. This report is to update council on the status of the Coronation Royal Oak, which is out in front of the Perth County Courthouse. Just want to acknowledge our facility supervisor, Nick Larson, and Betty Jo from Archives, who have contributed to drafting this report. Given the significance of this tree, we wanted to bring to council's attention the deteriorating health of the Royal Oak and the steps that staff are taking to maintain. The report includes a short article on the history of the Royal Oak that was published by the Stratford Perth Archives back in nineteen eighty-one. Staff have consulted with two local arborists who have diagnosed the tree with oak wilt. They have recommended ongoing pruning to invigorate new growth and give our tree a better chance of survival. There has been some significant deadwood over the last two years, which we've had a tree contractor remove and prune. And this has cost approximately two thousand dollars a year in both two thousand and twenty and this year. The intent of this report is just to inform council and the public that staff have identified this issue, recognized the significance of this tree and are taking proactive mesh measures to preserve the legacy and heritage of the Coronation Royal Oak. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John, Councillor Willhame?
Just a comment. John, have you talked to anyone about, I think they call it deep-root fertilizing? And that apparently helps trees and I don't know if the arborist suggested that or not.
We haven't, they haven't suggested that, but it'll be something, this is obviously something we'll work very closely with the arborist.
Questions or comments? I don't see any hands. I have a motion, the Perth County Council receives the Coronation Royal Oak Tree slash Perth County Courthouse report. Moved by Deputy Warden Naget, seconded by Councillor Willhame. Those in favor? That's carried. Okay, now we're moving on to asset management and I believe Bill's going to do this one. Bill up. By the way, John, that new sign you put across the road for me for the school works really well. So when it's flashing, the speed limit probably slows down from a hundred and ten to eighty. So at least we've slowed them down a little bit. I know it says sixty, but I, we're a long ways from there yet.
That, that's great to hear, Warden Herson. Yeah, when we were out there the other day, I was going to phone you up and see if you wanted to get a picture out there.
No, we were good. I was watching you. I was out in the air. Glad to see you took the post out from across my driveway, so I don't get it. Anyway, now we're going to move on. Bill, we're ready for the triaxle plow truck replacement report.
Okay, thank you, Warden Herson, members of council. This report in front of you is with regards to pre-budget approval to begin the purchasing process for the replacement of one of our plow trucks, which is scheduled for replacement in the two thousand and twenty-two budget year. We have budgeted three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this purchase. If we receive pre-budget approval, we will be able to adjust the budget accordingly to, to closer to actual figures, once the tender results and quotations are in. Also to note, we would be looking to provide a joint tender with some of the local municipalities for this purchase, similar to what we've done in the past. And I don't believe there's anything else to add to the report at this time, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Questions for Bill on this report? Councillor Willhame?
Just a quick question, wondering if you're using the same numbers from last year? And if so, you probably should add twenty-five percent on to.
No, the, the projected budget amount there was adjusted from what we had previous year to reflect our predictions for the market conditions.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I'm assuming we don't get on this shortly. We'll never see a truck next year anyway. So I have a motion here, the Perth County receives a pre-budget approval slash triaxle plow truck replacement report for information and that Perth County Council authorized pre-budget approval to initiate the procurement process for replacement of V one zero zero eight cab and chassis. And the Perth County Council authorized pre-budget approval to initiate the procurement for the replacement of the V one zero zero eight plow equipment through a sole source purchase from Viking Sivs Limited. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Ait. Last chance for comments or questions? Don't see any of those in favor? That's carried. Very good. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Next is roadside weed management contract.
Yes, thank you, Warden Herson. I'll take this one. This report is pretty straightforward and for council's information, the county and the four local municipalities are looking to renew our roadside weed management contract with Green Stream Lawn and Vegetation Management Incorporated for an additional three years. I have also included a brief update on our treatment of frag mighties along the county writerways. And staff have completed an inventory of frag locations and treated about seventy-five percent of those in two thousand and twenty and the remainder being completed this fall. As well, for council's information, I received an email from the CAO of West Perth. And at a recent meeting of their Environmental Forestry and Trees Committee, one of their members acknowledged and expressed gratitude for the county's treatment of frag mighties along its roadside. So it's great to see that our efforts are being recognized. And lastly, with this renewal, our, under our procurement policy, the CAO has execution authority. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John on this report? Councillor Duncan?
I'm not really questioning, I just want to congratulate John on his frag mighties chasing efforts and hope to continue in the future so we can eliminate them in Perth County. Thanks, John.
Could be a tall task. It seemed to spread quickly. Even more so likely with this, all this rain and water moving. Other comments or questions? I have one que- question. So have you done the fall treatment yet for the frag mighties?
No, they have not completed that as yet, so we're
I have a councillor in Perth South that keeps saying that, is it one thirteen or one twelve they're on there?
One thirteen.
One thirteen, I think there's some frag mighties along there. He reminded us on Tuesday that he didn't think it had been dealt with yet, so I'm leaving it in your more than capable hands.
It will be attended to.
Perfect. Thanks, John. I think that's it for Public Works. Oh, we need a mover and a seconder on that. Sorry. Again, too many pieces of paper. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the roadside weed management contract report. Moved by Deputy Warden Naget, seconded by Councillor Duncan. Those in favor? And that would be carried. Thanks, boys. Okay, we're going to move on to council reports. Do we have anything for council reports? Not seeing anything, so we're going to move on to bylaws nine point one. And I have a bylaw, the three eight three nine dash two oh two one, be read a first, second and third time and finally passed the seventh day of October two thousand and twenty-one, and that is reference to the OPA we amended. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Duncan. Those in favor? And that's carried. Notice the motions? Don't believe we have any. I don't see any coming up. Any hands? Other business, we have a verbal report from the net.
Yes, good morning. There are grants which are available through the province for projects that increase municipal efficiency and effectiveness. So the municipal modernization intake three grant is coming up, and we're currently working on projects that relate to modernization of the emergency management program, uh, G I S and nine-one-one of modernization and corporate records modernization. So full report will, will follow at the next council meeting, but we just wanted to give you a heads up that these grants are available and that we're working on projects that would qualify for these grants.
Any questions for Annette on that subject? Don't see any. Thank you. We don't really need a motion to receive that. Okay, so next on the agenda is announcements. Anybody have any announcements? Don't see any. Uh, next would be closed session, and I need a motion to move into closed session at eleven oh one. Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? That is carried, so we're gonna need a couple minutes to stop livestream. So we are reporting at closed session. You have a motion for me to-
Yes. So this is, uh, through the order, reporting out with respect to the matter of particular advice negotiations integrity commissioner. Uh, the resolution would be that the C A O be directed to extend the retainer agreement with Eric Bearless L L P to act as the integrity commissioner for a four-year term in accordance with R F P number twenty seventeen dash one zero zero dash zero one.
Mover and seconder, moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. And I have a bylaw here now. The three eight four zero dash two oh two one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation, the county of Perth, that's regular meeting held October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, is ready first, second and third time, and finally passed October seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by Counselor Willhame, seconded by Deputy Warden Nagget. Those in favor? It's carried. Motion to adjourn at eleven fifty-seven. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Willhame. Those in favor? Thank you very much. That's carried.